I'd like to call Riverside Township Board of Trustees, meeting for March 11, 2014, to order. Wayne, would you please lead the pledge?
Yes.
My pledge is allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call of the board.
Trustee Giesman?
Yes.
Trustee Kavitsky?
Here.
Trustee Erdler?
Here.
Trustee Clark?
Here.
Supervisor Tusher?
Here.
Let the record know, Clark was also in attendance.
Okay, we have no minutes for the special meeting for February 6, 2014, but we'll put them in next month's.
I have to apologize to you all. I had them at home and I forgot to submit them for the booklet.
Okay, do I hear approval of the minutes of February 11, 2014, board meeting?
So moved. The minutes of the township board, February 11, 2014.
Second.
Any questions, concerns? Hearing none. Roll call.
Trustee Giesman?
Yes.
Trustee Clark?
Yes.
Trustee Kavitsky?
Yes.
Trustee Erdler?
Yes.
Supervisor Tusher?
Yes.
Motion carry.
Any communications?
Yes, we have several. We have a letter that was addressed to you, Rich, and it was by a recipient of our food bank, and she thanked the residents, the trustees, the staff while she was here. The food that she received was much appreciated. There is a notice in my box, and actually it's for this evening. It was a Homeland Security awareness. There was also a fundraiser to help support reelection Judy Bart Pincott, Illinois State Controller. It was held in Cicero on Tuesday, March 4. That has passed also. And that concludes the communications I have.
Visitors' remarks. Supervisor report, none. Trustees' report.
Wait, wait, wait.
Oh, well. Well, I looked at you and you just, oh, yeah, okay. But maybe later on you're gonna do it.
Okay.
Yeah, fine.
Okay, just wanted to give you an update on what's happening in this such as office. My name is Fran Segways. I represent the township's office. The first round of appeals for 2014 with the such as office is now closed officially yesterday. It was a last state of appeals for the county such as office. I estimate that we had a contact with about 400 people during the appeal period, 300 of which came to the office. And this was with 25 working days. We worked two cook time holidays and weekends. So we were really busy. And that's just people who came in for appeals. We also kept people coming in for exemptions. And when the tax was happening, we had a lot of people coming in with questions about their tax bill. So with this, because this was a reassessment year and all the taxpayers get a notice from the county, I didn't put any articles in the paper and I didn't put any information on social media sites. And if I had, we would not be able to handle the files.
Were all of these people from Riverside Township?
They were all from Riverside Township, yes. Because they're the only people who did, we're the only township open for appeals here in this area.
Oh, good. Well, that's why I asked us to wonder if other townships.
Yes. So, so it was just, you know, it was just a really busy time. We had a lot of people come in. And the next appeal period will be in August, where we work and have a lot of things.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good work.
Trustees' reports. None here. Hearing none. Mental Health Board report. Anything to report, Anne?
Well, the written reports are in the package, but I just wanted to note that Gilzik, who's been our consultant for many years, is retiring at the end of this month. So we are in the process of doing a search for a new consultant.
What's his name?
Gilzik.
He's retired?
Yeah.
He's only about 45.
Well, I think he might be a little older.
Okay.
But he's retired, moving up to Wisconsin. Yeah. So keep you advised.
Okay. Approval, any, anybody have any questions, Fran? Okay, under old business. Approval, approved final law, township budget 2014, 2015.
I make a motion that we approve the budget ordinance for 2014, 2015.
It's already to approve to be adopted at the next meeting, right? Can I say approved? Do we have, we're not adopting it, right?
Well, I think this is premature, because I checked the notice from the paper and it was put in the paper February 19. It's gotta be open for public inspection for 30 days.
Well, that was a tentative one we went through.
Right.
A tentative one was gonna, which we did.
Right.
Open for 30 days.
Right.
So we can approve this one.
Well, no, it hasn't been 30 days though. It's February 19.
I thought we were just approving like the draft of it or something, and we adopted at the next meeting.
No. It has to be on public display for 30 days, then you have to have the hearing. So we have to have a hearing before we actually, you know, went ahead and approved it.
So would, so when do you want to have a hearing and then adopt it?
At the April.
The April meeting will adopt it, correct?
Well, you'll have the hearing too. We always, historically, we've had the hearing like at somewhere around, you know.
After the initial meeting?
Yeah, after the annual meeting. We'll have the annual meeting and then we have the hearing at 6:45, say. And then the regular meeting is at 7 o'clock. And then we've always adopted the final at.
I thought we were just, this was just approved like the draft of it. This wasn't gonna be.
We already did that. I mean.
Well, this was changed again.
It was updated, and I hope it was updated before it went to the paper.
Okay, well, then there's nothing we can do with this. Okay.
I, if, you need to look at it and be satisfied, because you could still make changes before.
Up until 6:45 or 6:46?
Well, at that final meeting. At the meeting where it's adopted. And people might come to the hearing and wanna, you know, comment and make, indicate some changes where necessary too. But at that final meeting, before it's adopted, you could make, if you saw that you wanted, there was something that you thought needed to be changed.
But this included all the changes that we had from the special meeting. That's what I thought we were looking at tonight, to just approve it, the changes, but not to adapt the actual document until April. But we'll do the hearing, I guess, at 6:45 next month, and then adopt it at the general meeting.
At the general meeting. Yeah, you already approved the tentative, so you don't have to do it twice.
Well, I just wanted to include all the changes. Well, we'll approve it to the final one at April. At the general meeting, we'll adopt it.
We'll adopt the.
Right.
So John's motion fails, first.
Right, failed. So let's just let it go. Fail. So we're gonna adopt? Yes, we don't approve it, we adopt it. Okay. Um, okay. Township special events. Anne, got ahold of the bicycle company, Bike Drive. Can you tell us more about that, Anne?
Yeah, I've got a tentative date. Actually, it's more than tentative now. April, Saturday, April 7. I put a note in everybody's mailbox and I only heard back from Wayne and Rich.
You said June 7.
Oh, June. That's what I, did I say, I said April. No, June, sorry. June 7, 9 to noon. They have it on their calendar. I have cleared it with North Riverside. And we have 8 to 1, 8 for setup, 1 to clean up the police parking lot in North Riverside, in the Commons. So that's, I mean, I need to do some advertising kind of thing beforehand.
You wanna give about $300 for, approve $300 for advertising for this? Well, wait, is there, is there a township newsletter going out before this? Yeah. Let's make sure it's in there. Yes, I already, yeah. But we still should advertise it. Oh, no, I understand, but I didn't want that missed. No, it's not. Okay.
Yeah, but I don't think that's really specifically on the agenda to vote on that.
Okay.
So let's do it next month.
Okay.
You know, to approve a budget for, just for advertising, that's all. It's not gonna cost us anything up in North Riverside.
Okay. Um, I put in, um, you know, the document shredding. I had some information from GOP, or it's a garbage company, what they, what they do and costs. Also, I talked to Chief, Riverside Fire Chief Spencer. I have, always have a hard time pronouncing his last name.
Kamora.
Pardon me?
Kamora.
Kamora. He's gonna double check with the CPR training that we can hold, because, you know, we had heard that the village rec used to do it for babysitters, but he had heard of anything. So he's double checking. And then also, we were talking about the Children of the Holocaust lecture. And he says, you know, you know, I've got relatives that lived through the Japanese internment camps. I said, well, we try to put, so we're working on that too. You know, I guess his, well, his grandfather, his father was in the army or something. You know, his grandparents were in internment camps. So, you know, trying to put that together. Anybody else have? Getting back to the shredding though, are we taking into consideration Riverside Bank? Or is that, is that, I don't, is that just for their, their customers? I mean, that's where I go. I don't think they're gonna check.
They welcome all.
Oh, they welcome all? Well, then we should.
If we're gonna do that, we shouldn't do it in May, because that's when the bank does that.
Okay. Well, you know, we can find out more and do it maybe six months out, down the road after that. Yeah, and you can watch them shred it too in the bank.
Yeah, no, I know. It might be good to check with at least one other.
I can't hear you.
Said it might be good to check with at least one other company to compare prices.
Yeah.
And the bank uses a company called Citadel, I believe. So it's another option. Just, any, doesn't have to be them, but, you know, just to compare. And as far as the CPR, you know, Red Cross, or, you know, they, I think they do.
You know, I was thinking more like for babysit certification. For babysitters, kids for babysitting. Well, and not only that, what about caretakers for the elderly too? Yeah, yeah. I mean, that would, that would be even more, so.
Well, I had a class last year, I mean, within the last several months, and we did both adults and babies.
What'd you take it?
It was held up at Concordia in River Forest.
Well, we got, we'll look into it.
So I mean, they did both, so.
Yeah, we'll look into it, you know. You know, because, you know, we don't, I don't, we don't wanna step on the village of Riverside's toes if they're, have something planned. Okay?
Yeah.
Okay. Under new business, adopt annual township meeting agenda.
Do you have a motion to that?
Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
Second. Any questions, concerns? Yeah, has anybody contacted you about putting something on the agenda? Nope, and they can't do it anymore. There's a certain date, I can't remember what it was. Okay. That was because this is an election year, and I'm just wondering if anything, something coming out of the closet again. That date passed. Okay. Yeah, okay. What? Roll call.
Trustee Kavitsky?
Yes.
Trustee Clark?
Yes.
Trustee Erdler?
Yes.
Trustee Giesman?
Yes.
Supervisor Tusher?
Yes.
Motion carry.
Okay, supervisor annual report. Their corrections. Anne found some mistakes, and then when I talked to Monte, they found another mistake, which everything else, it's, it was in your box. And the final one starts with, um, 3750, 32750. Can I say something?
Sure.
On the last page, it says, where you sign it, Rich, it says Town of Riverside. I can't hear you. On the last page where you sign, it's a State of Illinois, County of Cook, Town of Riverside. This is, this is the township of Riverside, not, this is the budget for the township, not the town.
No, but they are synonymous terms when it comes to township.
Yeah, that's confusing.
But they are. If you look at the, there it says Town Hall.
Yes, I know. I understand that, Town Hall. But some people call it the Township Hall, but it's not. It's the Town Hall.
It's both. But, you know, town, I think, is the older term.
Yes.
But it's, okay.
Okay.
Rich, I'm a bit confused. I have two pages.
The corrected one, you will see, it's our general fund, 104, 464, 84.
Looks like it's 25 of them.
And the amount of public funds. And then it goes down to real estate tax collection, 32, 172, 08. There was a corrected one in your box. There shouldn't be any punches, whole punches in it.
Yeah, this one, it's, it's not anything.
Okay.
No, this was off of my thing and this was in my box.
That's the correct one.
No, it's not. It's the same as, as the old one.
Well, I'll give you the correct one.
Here it is. See, see this? They're both the same.
Oh, okay. Thirty, well, it should be 30, 32, 172, 629 for the pantry, and 36, 08 for a total of 143,02 for the total receipts. The spur print is 43, 692 for our closing balance of March 10th, 96, 609, 14.
That's the corrected one with the memo.
And what I will do, I will sign this here now. Any other questions, concerns? Hearing none. Roll call.
What are people calling, motion?
Do I hear a motion to accept? Did you make the motion and I seconded it on this, or was that the other one?
That was the other, something, that was something different.
I'll make a motion that we accept the township budget, or the annual financial statement, I'm sorry, from the supervisor, for the period of April 1, 2013, to March 10, 2014. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Questions, concerns? Hearing none. Roll call.
Trustee Giesman?
Yes.
Trustee Kavitsky?
Yes.
Trustee Erdler?
Yes.
Trustee Clark?
Yes.
Supervisor Tusher?
Yes.
Motion carry.
Let me sign this and I'll give it to you for the, for the files.
That one report has to be posted, you know, like in the past.
Pardon me, Anne?
The one, the smaller report has to be posted at the, like, two days before the annual meeting, kind of like what you've done in the past.
You mean that, that first one that I gave you?
The one that you, I guess.
I mean, I could just post this whole thing up there.
Yeah, because they've kind of combined them. The one, the shorter one was, I believe, one that just gave like.
The summary.
The summary, yeah. What you read at the meeting.
Right.
So I think that this is combined.
Yes.
Supervisor report to the board and then, which we're supposed to get 30 days before the meeting. And then there's a shorter one that you read at the meeting that's supposed to be posted like two days before, and then read at the meeting. I think that's the rule.
Hearing none. Those are signed. We've got two copies here.
Yes.
Yes, we did. It's approved in roll call. Right, okay. Budgetary transfer. Wayne, do you have the transfer? You want to take it from there?
Well, this is a result of earlier determination that two accounts of the result in overdraft condition, if we didn't do something about it. And this budget transfer will correct that.
Okay.
So you're making a motion to.
No, I make a motion that we approve this budget transfer. Second the motion.
Any other questions, concerns?
Just one comment. I seem to recall that the last time, the accountants suggested that we date these transfers. So just a matter of putting it at the bottom, dated today's date before you send it to them.
Good idea. That's so important.
Yeah, so let's do that on the one that we sign.
Trustee Kavitsky?
Yes.
Trustee Erdler?
Yes.
Trustee Clark?
Yes.
Trustee Giesman?
Yes.
Supervisor Tusher?
Yes.
Motion carry.
I put 31114 on the bottom of your hand, right? Okay. Dues for, uh, trustees division, TOI. Do you have a motion that we pay, which is it?
$30.
I'll make that motion, that we pay the trustees, the TOI trustees division dues for the current year, in the amount of $30.
Second the motion. Questions, concerns? Hearing none. Roll call.
Trustee Clark?
Yes.
Trustee Erdler?
Yes.
Trustee Giesman?
Yes.
Trustee Kavitsky?
Yes.
Supervisor Tusher?
Yes.
Motion carry.
And any of those for the supervisor for Lions Club? I see they went up, huh? Yeah.
$10.5.
Are you a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Any questions, concerns? Hearing none. Roll call.
Trustee Giesman?
Yes.
Trustee Kavitsky?
Yes.
Trustee Erdler?
Yes.
Trustee Clark?
Yes.
Supervisor Tusher?
Yes.
Motion carry.
Okay. As you can see, an update for the industrial appraisal company for what we usually do, for everything like inside.
Do we have any changes to report?
What's the purpose of that? Yeah.
Insurance purposes, Wayne?
Yeah, what's the purpose of the industrial appraisal?
Because it's been a couple of years.
Just updating it, just in case there's something to be added.
We could have add stuff. Let's say, you know, we added a new boiler, which we didn't fund it, or air conditioners, or whatever.
So unless we have something to add, though, all they're gonna do is update the depreciation totals it says on here. But do we have anything that, during the year, that was done? I mean, I know we did the carpeting, but I can't think of anything else.
France, the conditioners upstairs.
Was that?
Was done this year.
Okay, so.
At the end of the year, right?
Yeah.
No, we got that summer.
I think that.
It was at the end of the summer, wasn't it?
No, we got, you know, air conditioning out during the summer.
Yeah.
So I think it was completed in January, or is it January? No, it was actually done in 2012, man. It was done in actual 2012, in the winter.
So this is for the period.
So that won't affect this then?
It should be reported from February 20 of '13 to March 31. So that was not during that period.
No, it was 2012, she said. You may not need it this summer.
But we bought new chairs too. We cooked them last.
Yeah.
But is that, I don't know if that qualifies.
You have to buy new chairs, chairs anyway, if something happens.
I don't think that's equivalent.
The capital would qualify, and the carpeting, the same thing. Yeah, it's a small amount.
You want to cash on this thing?
Well, no, they will update it for depreciation. It's just that it'll cost more if you have something to add. For the, just doing the depreciation, no changes, the fee is $105. I think we should do it.
Yeah, sort of.
We should keep it current.
Right. Any other questions, concerns? No, do we, do we make a motion on this? Do I make them? I'll make a motion that we approve the industrial appraisal company's proposal for revalue, revaluation, for $105. Do I hear a second?
I second.
I think that's the wrong amount.
I think it is 200.
I just went by what you said.
I think, I'm sorry.
Is it 255?
Yeah, I think it's updated.
Well, I'm gonna amend that most with 250. And property records, 255. No, 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 no. It says on the next page, for updated property record fix success report based on no changes for a fee of $105.
That's what I was looking at.
The fee, this is the fees to update the report.
This is to proceed on the basis of no changes.
Right, so it is $105.
But didn't you say we had changes?
No.
Air conditioner?
No.
That was a year before. There were no changes.
It is $105.
Stand by, original motion, and Wayne seconded it, okay.
Okay, well, better to be sure. Okay, so you've got the motion and a second, right?
Yes.
Yeah. Roll call.
Trustee Clark?
Yes.
Trustee Erdler?
Yes.
Trustee Kavitsky?
Yes.
Trustee Giesman?
Yes.
Supervisor Tusher?
Yes.
Motion carry.
Okay, Anne, under your FYI, Anne and Steve Kavitsky received Lions Club Award. People, persons of the year.
I think we're very fortunate to have Anne and Steve related to the township as they are. And. they are. And, um, it, uh, it's very satisfying to, to read that kind of complimentary data on a fellow township trustee. And I am grateful to both of you.
Thank you very much.
Second the motion.
Thank you very much.
Any other?
It was an honor.
It was.
It was an honor.
Okay. Any further visitor remarks? Hearing on, two little warrants.
All right, I have a motion that the board approve and ratify payment of the bills identified on the general warrant, March two thousand fourteen, in the amount of ten thousand eight hundred fifteen dollars, fifty-seven cents, as presented to the board this eleventh day of March two thousand fourteen.
Second the motion. Questions, concerns? Hearing on roll call.
Trustee Giesman?
Yes.
Trustee Clark?
Yes.
Trustee Erthler?
Yes.
Trustee Kibitzki?
Yes.
Well, Supervisor Tusher?
Yes.
Motion carry.
Okay, a motion that the board ratify and approve payment of the amounts indicated on the following warrants. Utility warrant, March two thousand fourteen, in the amount of three thousand one hundred seven dollars, forty-one cents. Payroll warrant, March two thousand fourteen, in the amount of sixteen thousand thirty-four dollars, eighty-seven cents. Health warrant, March two thousand fourteen, in the amount of one thousand nine hundred fifty-seven dollars, sixty-two cents. Monthly filings, March two thousand fourteen, in the amount of three thousand four hundred dollars, forty cents. Grants, March two thousand fourteen, in the amount of ten thousand three hundred seven dollars. General assistance warrant, March two thousand fourteen, in the amount of one thousand eight hundred dollars. And township radio players warrant, March two thousand fourteen, in the amount of one hundred twenty dollars. All of the above is presented to the board this eleventh day of March two thousand fourteen.
Second the motion. Well, I make a, second the motion. Do I hear a motion?
I, well, she made the motion. I seconded it. This, under grants, this is, I don't know, my page is all screwed up. I don't see the ten thousand or whatever.
Oh, the totals aren't there. Sometimes that...
The total's not there on the grant.
Yeah, the total's not there, but if you add it up.
Okay, it comes out, all right.
Correct the amount. But double check me on it, I mean...
Well, I just caught that and I, well, I'll be sure.
Yeah, no, I don't know why that didn't total. It's kinda strange.
Any questions, concerns? Did I hear a second?
I did.
Questions, concerns? Hearing on roll call.
Trustee Giesman?
Yes.
Trustee Kibitzki?
Yes.
Trustee Clark?
Yes.
Trustee Erthler?
Yes.
Supervisor Tusher?
Yes.
Motion carry.
Okay. I have no other further comments or reviews. Do I hear a motion to adjourn?
I make a motion to adjourn.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Questions, concerns? Hearing none.